Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Ballard.
Here.
And Mr. Sneed.
Here.
Okay, we have five. First item is two A. Meeting minutes from the executive meeting December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one and committee of the whole December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. We need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. We have planning status sheet will be prepared for one twenty-four. Committee reports, the only thing we have is nominating committee. And that is Lou. Lou, you want to take it?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to nominate, I guess. One big sweep, I'd like to nominate all the officers to keep their same position.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero and we'll go to the first new business item, which is PC thirty-three dash twenty-one Scott Shelton.
Good evening. This is PC dash, PC thirty-three dash twenty-one Scott Shelton, which is being brought before you as a letter of recommendation. It's a request for a change in zoning from NU to R three for a three point three seven acre tract of land on the east side of Hagaman Road, approximately forty feet south of Studer Lane. As you recall from public hearing, this site is in South County and there it is outlined in red. On the aerial, you can see the surrounding single family homes and elementary school, which is directly across Hagaman Road. Here's the preliminary plan presented at public hearing. There are five proposed lots, each with its own entrance off Hagaman Road. Home on proposed lot one is already under construction. The petitioner indicated that each lot would have its own rain garden. The planning department is recommending approval of this request. The R three ten thousand square foot residence district is typical within the vicinity surrounding the subject site. The general area is developed with single family residences and the elementary school on Hagaman Road across the street from the site. As the petitioner is only requesting a change in zoning and not a special procedure, there are no additional conditions of development to adopt. However, site and access issues would be addressed during the preliminary plat review process. So at this time, I would like to request a motion for this letter of recommendation.
Oh, Miller. Do we have a second?
Just a Sneed out second.
We have any discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero and we'll go to PC thirty-four dash twenty-one Stephen P Link and Kathy M Jaeger.
So this is a request for a conditional use permit in the M one industrial district for a four point three four acre site at the southeast corner of Bell Fountain Road and Hilltop Lane. The site is located in far north county and you can see it here outlined in red. What you'll also see from the next aerial is that the properties north of the railroad tracks are zoned M one industrial district, while the tracks south of the railroad tracks are zoned residentially. While there are residentially developed lots in the M one along Bell Fountain Road. So the site plan, here's the entire site plan. You can see that it does include a large undeveloped portion to the south. But this is the overall site plan that shows the over four acre tract. And then I'll zoom into the detailed parts of the site plan. First, there is an existing single family residence on this parcel. The petitioner is proposing to split it off onto its own zero point six acre parcel shown outlined in blue here. The remainder of the tract, three point seven two acres is where the mechanic shop is, which would be utilized as the vehicle repair facility, as well as an accessory garage. The preliminary plan shows the vehicle repair facility in the existing mechanic shop, as well as three employee spaces north of the building and four customer spaces, parking spaces west of the building. The, uh, the drive aisle and the parking are shown on asphalt, but there is a section of gravel shown connecting the front part of the site to the garage. The site plan does not show any proposed lighting or signage, nor any proposed landscaping. So the department is recommending approval with some modifications to the site development plan. We do feel that it would be appropriate to use a dustproof surface on the parking spaces if the petitioner wishes to propose that. But we would recommend that all of the drive aisles be paved to increase the visual compatibility of the site and also to prevent wheel ruts from forming. We are recommending a thirty-five foot parking setback shown as the dashed red line from Bell Fountain Road. This is in lieu of the fifteen foot parking setback the M one would require. The reasoning for this is to basically relocate those parking spaces to a different area so they aren't in the road frontage to also increase the visual compatibility of the site. That space would also be, need to be developed with a fifteen foot wide landscape buffer yard as per the zoning ordinance, which is one tree and four shrubs for every twenty feet. As I mentioned, there's no lighting proposed, but we have written a condition recommending that any light standards are only sixteen feet in height. This is to match the residential standard to sort of soften the character of this use. And while no signage is proposed, we're recommending that any signage in the future would be monument in style. So we are recommending approval. This site has been zoned industrial, M one industrial district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance and a light industrial use has been established at this site. So we feel this proposed use is appropriate. The CUP procedure will allow the commission to impose conditions of development. This will ensure that this use is compatible with the existing residential development across Bell Fountain Road. And as I mentioned, while no signage was, is proposed, we have drafted the conditional use permit to limit signage to monument style. And we will also require a landscape plan to, uh, to see that buffer yard along Bell Fountain Road. So we are recommending approval of this request.
Okay, we need a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Do we have a second? Okay, we don't have a second. I will ask a question. What about outdoors storage of automobiles? Did we address that?
So we wrote that wrecked vehicles can only be stored on the site for a maximum of seventy-two hours, but they would be permitted in parking spaces as shown on the site plan.
So he, he would be limited by the number of parking spaces?
Also indicated that the garage to the east, Abby, if you go back to the sort of marked up plan, the garage to the east holds, I, I, let me pull up the report, either two or four cars. I, I wanted to say four, but let me pull it up, um, could go inside of that garage.
I think at public hearing, he indicated he wasn't in the habit of keeping cars overnight. We just want to make sure it's not a, uh, a storage lot down the road.
Sure. So we, you know, I, we could write it to, to say that cars to be worked on have to be stored in that garage, if that's something the commission's interested in.
Yeah, I would think so. I, there's, there's been others where we've limited outside parking.
This is Bill, Bill Sneed. I think that this was probably one of the major concerns at public hearing is the parking. And I think you've done some good things with the buffer and, and the setback and also if they can store them in the garage. The number of cars was the other issue. We heard both, uh, there's, they don't store a lot of cars. We also heard that they do store a lot of cars. So, uh, if, if they have designated spots, uh, as this plan shows, to me, it would have to, they would have to be stored in those spots. And that would certainly limit then the, uh, number of, of parked cars that overnight. Cause it's going to be hard to, uh, say seventy-two hours because one car is there, the next car is there. Uh, there's no way to keep, keep track of that.
Right.
I don't.
And I, so. Bill, I agree with you. Uh, I'm going back to that old Shell service station used to be on Dunn Road and Old Halls Ferry. It's a service station. It went to Motomar or something like that now. But he has a bunch of cars up there that's been wrecked and he's trying to repair them. It's not a service station anymore. We, we are, you know, so who's going to police that? And you're going to have a lot of these places. Well, there's already a bunch of them up here in, in North County, uh, where they just, you know, they call themselves selling cars, but stuff just sitting out there.
Right. It's my understanding that.
Just to, uh, not to, um, talk over you there, Bill, but I, I've driven back there and I've, it's, it does look like cars are just kind of sitting back there, uh, not being worked on. They may be being worked on, but it is, it's no way to really make sure that they're going to do what we're asking them to do.
Right.
And it's kind of, if you.
One, one thing we may want to consider is that, um, and, and, and it's uh, would entail fencing that area off at, at, at the area of, uh, uh, the setback with a gated fence so that in off hour thing, that's all closed up. I think that's when it really probably looks like everyone's gone home and there's cars left all over the place. I mean, during business hours, obviously they'd have to get in and out of there. So you wouldn't ask them to open and close it, but at night would certainly shield, uh, that whole place and really provide, uh, uh, security as well.
So I'm hearing, I think what are two, two different or maybe both options, either adding a condition to require vehicles to be serviced, to be located in the garage, which he said would hold four cars and/or to require a, a fence, I'm assuming a sight proof sort of fence along the drive to shield the use.
Yes, I'm, I'm proposing, uh, one or the other. I mean, if, if we'd limit them to four cars in the garage, that may, uh, that may not serve him as a business owner to only have four cars there. From, from what we've heard, uh, there's times when he has more than that. And that would force him to turn business away. And I don't think we're asking to do that. So the sight through fence would then, uh, uh, allow him to park, uh, another four, five cars in that area, uh, behind the fence.
Well, yeah, I don't think we want to give him, uh,
The privacy.
Uncapped number. I think we need to put some kind of number on it and if he needs more than, he needs to come back and ask for it.
Okay.
But if you remember that used car lot we did some years back on, uh, Union Road. And.
Absolutely.
He was going to have like twelve or thirteen cars and, and we go by there and he's got about forty cars sitting on the lot.
Right.
And Public Works was able to go and clean it up because we did have a number. And, um, I was by there a couple of weeks ago and he's still got it thinned out. So, I think you have to give Public Works a number to, uh, work off of.
To enforce.
Right.
This has one overhead door, correct Mel? Does the building have one overhead, one overhead roll up door? I just want to make sure that, you know, he's got, I think at public hearing, he indicated he was one, it was a solo practitioner. He wasn't going to have any employees. So his bays keep are, are sort of, you know, so I think the number can be reasonably low, um, to, to sort of minimize that. You know, add a number at which the commission finds appropriate.
Well, could we do the fences Bill suggested? The limit outdoor storage of say four vehicles. Then he's got four inside the garage. That gives him eight. I'm not sure how much a one main shop needs.
I think we can definitely, uh, we can put into there a condition that states, um, you know, no more than eight vehicles on the site. You know, four of which, you know, may be permitted in the, in the garage, um, and a, a sight proof fence to shield the use from Bell Fountain Road. Um, and I would, I would assume that with the way he's got his setup, hopefully we can minimize the amount of fence that that would absolutely require to, to get that effect.
What kind of fencing you're talking about?
Site, I would assume that it would be a sight proof fence. At that point, that way you could not see into the site unless it was the commission, unless the commission wanted to leave it more open and, and they could be either sight proof or, um, we could, and it would be up to the commission if you did not want, um, chain link. It could be, you could state that it could be decorative, um, to, to ensure that it's, um, you know, visually and aesthetically pleasing along Bell Fountain Road.
Okay.
Well, the vinyl would probably work.
But here Wayne, I'm, I'm getting back to that Dunn Road, uh, Old Halls Ferry again. It looks like hell up there. Excuse my expression.
Yeah. Well, that's what we're trying to avoid here. What's your thoughts, Bill?
If you ask me to vote for it, I would say no.
Okay. Well, right now we don't have a second, so.
Procedurally, Mr. Hillsinger, I believe that probably we need to get a motion and at which point it would need to probably be voted up or down one way or the other. Um, unless the commissioner wanted to, this is my Robert's rules are not super good.
We could put a hold on.
Fails if we don't get a second.
Yeah, that's true. So, or you could put a hold on it if you wanted, as, as Mr. Sneed was saying, uh, to, if there was further information that you would like for the department to gather from the petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would withdraw my motion for approval.
Okay, so now we have no mo, does anyone want to put a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion. This is Bill Sneed. To put up and get back with the, uh, uh, petitioner and, uh, and define to them what we discuss. And come back to us.
We have a motion to hold. We have a second.
So.
Any discussion?
So the Department of Planning will go back to the petitioner with an, with a, uh, expectation of bringing a revised uh, plan or a revised report to you at your next meeting, which will be, uh, the twenty-fourth. In that, in that, when we discuss with the petitioner, we will bring up with him concerns about numbers of vehicles at the site, um, and additional screening in terms of a fence that he is, uh, that he would be willing to do. Um, and where those, um, you know, where his vehicles would be stored, um, you know, subject to this conversation, uh, this evening. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
That's correct. And Jacob, just, just one thing. He, he has the, the mechanic would, I'm sure, you know, pulls cars in there and works on them. So I don't know how many cars he can get in there.
In the shop.
And then he has this garage that is another two or four. So, uh, I don't think it's difficult, would be difficult for him to agree to keep everything in, inside. And the other op, option is not to park anything outside and not have to put a fence up.
Right.
I mean, that all depends on how many cars he thinks he needs. And we can't answer that.
He may have one car and work on it all week. Excuse me for talking, but, uh, you may have one car and you're doing a motor or something and he work all week on that thing.
Sure.
Sure. Absolutely. That's right. So.
Now he's got four, five in queue. So what do you do with them?
Well, I think that the department has enough direction, um, if the commission were just to vote and hold, um, to, to bring to you, uh, the answers to those questions.
Uh, we got a motion for, to hold. We got a first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, I'll vote aye. So we have two, uh, the motion fails.
I had that Mr. Cunningham was on mute. I'm not sure what your vote was, Mr. Cunningham.
I did not vote.
Oh, okay.
Well, we need five votes to pass it and we don't have five votes, so.
Well, that means I vote no.
Okay. Any other no's?
I do too. I vote no. I was on mute, so I'm unmuted.
Gary, what about you?
I, I have previously voted, uh, we're voting on holding it, right?
Yes, yes.
I voted in favor of the hold.
Okay, so it's three, two, the motion fails. We needed five, so. I think it's essentially on, on hold at this point. Is that correct Mel? Or does it fail altogether?
I.
My understanding of it at this point, without, uh, without the commission moving it forward, um, either to hold it, to my understanding of it would be is that it's a, it's a failure and it, unless it was to be, um, brought back up to the commission,
Okay.
that this is a, that this, that this has failed.
Okay.
And deemed denied.
The tradition, uh, yeah, the petition is deemed denied, uh, on a three, two vote. So we will go on to PC thirty-five dash twenty-one Eric Scott and Janet Lewis.
Uh, good evening commissioners. Uh, this is being brought to you as a letter of recommendation this evening. Um, as you recall, uh, PC thirty-five dash twenty-one Eric Scott and Janet Lewis is a request for a change in zoning from R three to R one for a three point two seven acre tract located on the west side of Eckert Lane, approximately five hundred and forty feet north of Priggy Road. Uh, you can see from the county contacts map, uh, this site is located in North County. And you can see some of the surrounding uses in the aerial, um, primarily residential. There is Laramore Park to the north and east of the site. And then as you go further south, um, pass on the other side of Priggy Road is, um, uh, a middle school. Uh, we are recommending approval this evening. Um, R one, uh, zoning is appropriate at this site. Our districts are appropriate, um, to be located adjacent to parks. Um, additionally, the proposed use of a community garden or urban farm would be appropriate. Um, and the tract is large enough to comfortably accommodate, uh, such a use. And so at this time I would request a motion for approval.
Make a motion approval.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero and we'll go on to PC thirty-seven dash twenty-one Insight Real Estate Investment Properties.
Um, yes, as you recall, PC thirty-seven dash twenty-one Insight Real Estate Investment Properties is a request for a change in zoning from C three to C eight for a three point five acre tract on the southeast quadrant of Lindbergh Boulevard and Boar Park Road. As you recall from public hearing, the site is in South County near the city of Green Park. And there you can see the outline, the site outlined in red. On the aerial, you can see the existing commercial development on Lindbergh Boulevard and the residences to the south of the site. This is a map of Lindbergh Boulevard between Teson Ferry Road and Concord Road. There are currently twelve automobile dealerships along this stretch of Lindbergh, making this an appropriate location for the proposed electric vehicle dealership at the site. Additionally, this would be the only electric vehicle dealership in South County. The closest dealership that is similar to this is currently in the city of Chesterfield. This is the preliminary site development plan presented at public hearing. It shows a proposed parking lot expansion to the south to create an outdoor storage area for inventory and vehicles waiting to be serviced. Um, the petitioner indicated that existing plantings on the western part of the rear property line would be used in place and that new landscaping would be concentrated in the eastern part of the rear buffer yard. Additionally, the existing structure would be used in place with some modification, including a new storefront door added to the Lindbergh facing side and the removal of a bump out on the eastern side of the building. New overhead roll up doors added for service center entry and exit and the ceiling of the southern portion of the building to be raised to a height of fif, of seventeen feet, um, which would match the northern part of the building. Um, after a public hearing, the petitioner submitted a revised preliminary site development plan in response to resident concerns. One of the additions on this plan is, uh, eight foot high vinyl board on board fencing around the rear portion of the site that is proposed for outdoor storage. Um, this fence addresses the residents' concerns about security and privacy. Additionally, the petitioner has added permeable pavers on the east and south parts of the site to provide better stormwater management. Finally, the petitioner indicated plans to remove the existing plantings along the south property line and instead shows an expanded rear buffer yard on the revised plans. The department is concerned about the amount of landscaping at the site and ways to screen the site from the abutting residential properties. So we are recommending landscaping be installed on both Lindbergh Boulevard and Boar Park Road as, um, as outlined in the zoning ordinance. We recommend that the rear buffer yard be increased to thirty feet wide with four trees and four shrubs per twenty linear feet. To reduce the potential for disruptive lighting, new light standards south of the structure shall not exceed sixteen feet in height. Um, and illumination levels shall be zero point zero foot candles twenty feet north of the south property line. Finally, loudspeakers can create a nuisance for nearby residents, residents and shall not be used at the site. This is a close up of our landscaping recommendation for the rear property line. We're suggesting a thirty foot wide buffer yard for increased privacy and to also give the plants room to grow. This would reduce the number of parks by four spaces. Um, the requirement of four trees and four shrubs per twenty linear feet would call for sixty-five trees and sixty-five shrubs total. And the department finds that this dense landscaping combined with the sight proof fence proposed by the petitioner will provide significant privacy for residents. Additionally, um, this is a view of the, that existing Marshall home, um, sign that is on the property. The department feels that the existing sign is similar in style to the sign for a new car wash next door and that it could be refaced in, and used in place. However, um, if new signage is proposed, it should be monument in style. So the department is recommending approval. We find that commercial zoning is reasonable and in keeping with the surrounding land use and development pattern. The C eight planned commercial district offers the county and community maximum input in the site design and how the requested uses interact. And how the requested uses interact with adjoining properties. Um, as shown on the map shown previously, vehicle sales, rental and leasing is a common land use on both sides of Lindbergh Boulevard. Between Tesson Ferry and Concord Road. And this development, uh, there is an existing car centric node at the southeast corner of Tesson Ferry Road. And Lindbergh Boulevard, which includes an automobile dealership and the car wash that is next door to this site. And this development would provide a new opportunity to purchase electric vehicles in South County. Electric vehicles are do represent a growing share of new vehicle sales. And are an important technology to reduce CO2 emissions. And the department is recommending some specific conditions of development, which include. A expanded rear buffer yard planted with four trees and four shrubs per twenty linear feet. Additional landscaping along Ling Lindbergh Boulevard and Boar Park Road. Um, we're recommending that illumination levels be zero point zero foot candles twenty feet north. Of the south property line. Um, and we find that the existing sign can be refaced and used in place. Additionally, we are calling that architectural architectural review will be required.
Okay, uh, thank you. Do we have any kind of motion?
I'd like to make a a motion. For a hold and I would like to explain why if we can get that seconded.
Go ahead, Bill.
I second it, Bill.
Can we have a first, a second for a hold?
Do we?
Yes, I second it.
Yeah, Bill.
Okay, thank you. I think there's a lot of information that we asked for at public hearing that the results or the responses. We had gotten from the petitioner uh, really had not uh, answered many of those. And I am concerned uh, uh, about uh, uh. What we're doing here and how that relates to what's been done in the past. And if it's a good thing, we'd like to do it here. If it's a bad thing, obviously, we don't. And one of the things would be needed for information is as we go down that uh, uh corridor. Uh, most of the car dealerships do in fact butt up against residential. I would, I would like to suggest that we get the information of what is the greatest distance? Uh, what is the shortest distance between uh, development and residential? And and obviously an average to see what we're asking for here. It it's, I think your suggestion to make a thirty foot buffer sounds good. I just would like to know what that really means in terms of what's been done in the past or what we probably should be doing in the future. The type of buffer you're suggesting look look much better than what was there before. Uh, the other thing is the amount of renovation to the building on the exterior. And and the parking lot. To my uh, remembrance of the public hearing. Um, it it sounded as though they were going to reuse. A lot of the parking lot. Uh, asphalt and I and I drove over there. And a great deal of it is um, uh, cracked and and needs replacement or re- re refurbishing. Uh, the building itself, uh, they said they would paint paint it. Uh, if this is a first class uh, uh, car dealership. Uh, it by by the way, we don't really know who's going in there. We would like to know that. But if this is a first class car dealership, it would seem to me that they would have plans as to how they're going to. Uh, modify and renovate that building. Uh, so for those reasons, I would like to have uh, uh, that kind of information before I could support it.
Good, thank you. Anyone else?
Also, wasn't there quite a bit of water issues on this site?
Yes.
And when I see the word permeable pavers, that just leaves me to believe that we're asking for more water to go into the ground. And if there's already a groundwater problem.
Do we have any comments from MSD on this?
Yes, so the report does have comments from MSD. This site will be required to adhere to all MSD's standards. So the use of permeable pavers is in general a um, one of a buffet of options for BMPs. That a petitioner can use um, to encourage infiltration uh, of water into this, the ground soil immediately beneath it. Um, because otherwise, if it was impermeable, all that water would then sheet off and and as the commission well knows at this point, um. Um, you know, would sheet off and would create a a flow, a flow issue um, and exacerbate other other issues. So the the permeable pavers um, are one of a buffet of options that the that the petitioner may may use to encourage infiltration. Uh, immediately onto the site. Um, so what I'm hearing from the commission is it would like to, it would like for the department to go back. Look at some of these um, these existing dealerships. Um, come up with um, providing you a little bit more information about what's the largest, the smallest and an average distance. That these buffers from adjoining residential uses um, are. Um, I hear concerned about the pavement of the 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 quality of the pavement in the parking lot. Um, it's my recollection that they are going to repave and resurface the entire parking lot. Additionally, they are showing the addition of landscaped islands throughout the parking lot, but we can get a um, have the petitioner submit a letter directly to the commission. Um, stating that directly and clearly to you um, and a a request for uh, more in depth. Um, you know, what it is that there, how MSD is going to be treating, um, you know, treating this use as well as. Um, looking and and looking for further explanations as to the um, renovation of the building. Um, we can ask for either a a verbal or written or excuse me, a written report to the commission explaining it a little bit more in depth. Um, and we can, if the petitioner has created um, additional um, architectural renderings of any sort. Uh, we can ask for those to be presented to you at your next meeting uh, or the next meeting at which these documents can be prepared. Does that encapsulate the concerns of the commission?
Well, we also need to know who the tenant's gonna be.
So you are requesting that the tenant be um, be named?
Yes.
Wayne, didn't we ask him that question? I I recall him saying.
That was asked multiple times and we have a letter from Councilman Tracus. Who brought up the same issue that the petitioner was unwilling to tell us. Who was going to occupy the building? Don't work in our favor.
Right. I do recall him saying he was gonna pave the lot, though, when we asked him that question. But uh, yeah, he refused. And so to me, it sounds like it's gonna be a um, a second class facility there.
Well, that's kind of what you have to assume if you don't know anything different. So. Anything else we need to add?
I think that.
None, we have a motion to hold. We have a first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And we'll go to uh, letters for approval. First one's PC twenty-eight dash twenty-one. JAMA West Properties.
Yes, this is PC twenty-eight dash twenty-one JAMA West Properties LLC coming before you as a letter of recommendation. As you recall, this is a request for a change in zoning from M three FPM three NU FP. And FPNU to C eight and FPC eight for a six point one nine acre tract of land. On the south side of Manchester Road, approximately two hundred and sixty feet west of Dietrich Road. Um, as you.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, as you recall, this site is in West County and you can see it there outlined in red. Um, subsequent to your approval of this um, petition. The petitioner submitted a new site development plan in response to the request to reduce the number of entrances. On the site from three to one. The revised site development plan shows two thirty-nine foot wide commercial entrances. Um, two entrances are necessary at the site to allow for large vehicle haulers to enter and exit safely. Without having to back on to Manchester Road. So we are recommending approval of this letter of recommendation as this revised plan is in line with the um, commission's overall goal. To reduce the number of curb cuts on Manchester Road.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we need a motion?
I make a motion for approval.
We have a second? Anyone?
I second it.
Okay, we have a first and second discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And next item is PC thirty-three dash twenty-one Scott Shelton.
We did that one as an in or in new business. And thirty-five as well. So we're on to correspondence now.
Okay, all right, we'll go to nine A, which is PC oh eight dash fifteen.
This is PC oh eight dash fifteen, um, Semsat and Safika Sakinovich. It is a request for an amendment to M three ordinance twenty-six two zero one. For a nine point nine eight six acre tract of land on the south side of Baumgartner Road, west of Baumgartner Industrial Drive. This site is in far south county. There you can see the site outlined in red. As you can see from the aerial, there is mostly industrial development surrounding the site. The site um, is also bordered by Merrimack River to the south. This is the site plan that is currently under review. Um, the M three ordinance calls for all drive aisles and parking areas to be paved. The um, petitioner's request is to allow an alternative dustproof material on all drive aisles and parking areas. The department is recommending a partial approval. The Board of Zoning Adjustment has previously granted a variance to allow dustproof material on the site three different times. Um, we feel that amending the ordinance is more appropriate because Board of Zoning Adjustment variances are only valid for six months. Um, the department finds that a dustproof alternative material is appropriate on the truck parking area. But not on the drive aisles or vehicle parking areas. Drive aisles and vehicle parking areas receive heavier use, which which warrants paving to prevent any kind of rutting at the site. We're also recommending that internal curbing shall be added to the parking area. To control the spreading of dustproof materials beyond the intended area.
Do we have a motion of any kind?
Can can um, can a petitioner just explain just a little bit more in detail? Uh, what what exactly is dust, a dustproof material?
So the county has a a list of approved dustproof surfaces um, that um, that that the county would choose from. So the Department of Planning and the Department of Transportation. Um, and it's, it's usually, it's pea gravel, a lot of it's mined out of the, out of the Merrimack River. It can't be crushed limestone, it can't be a material um, that's going to, you know, throw up a lot of dust. Um, so there are already um, several um, that they would choose from that have already been approved by the Department of Transportation and planning. Um, and they would have to choose from one of those pre-approved types of surfaces.
Okay, so.
Said no to this back in, uh, what, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen? And that is when the petitioner tried to go around us.
So it is correct. I believe that the history of this petition is that um, originally the planning commission did recommend denial of this request. Um, through various processes, it was ultimately approved by the county council um, creating this use. Um, the site has had multiple site plans approved for it. Um, however, it has never been constructed and utilized. Um, so they are coming back. There's another site development plan under review. Um, they requested this right um, to use dustproof alternative surfaces in lieu of the, in lieu of full paving. Um, and the department uh, took their request um, and. Made our recommendation for it at minimum, making the drive aisles and the vehicle parking areas paved. Um, while permitting the area where the trucks would be to use that alternative dustproof surface.
They have a for sale sign. They've had one for quite a while on this property. And there has been some trucks parked there. Without.
If trucks have been parked there, I don't believe that because they have, while they have a site development plan that the commission ultimately approved and has been recorded. They've never pulled their permits and and gained occupancy for the site under the, under their permitted uses. Um, so you know, trucks that have been parked there are um, would be inappropriately parked until the, until a site plan is approved and they ultimately get it constructed.
But they didn't want to. They didn't want to follow the uh, site plan that was approved.
Correct. They have, they've wanted to, they've revised it. Um, they revised it. Um, and they have come back and had it reviewed a couple of times. So now they're coming back to have it reviewed again. Um, that's, that would be different from what uh, the commission approved. And ultimately, what would happen is um, if the commission did recommend approval of this this evening. It would come back to you at, whenever the site plan was ready, it would come back to you again for approval in front of you before it would be. Um, you know, receive its final approval.
Okay, Jacob, uh, this is Bill. Um, could you, could you clarify uh, what the Board of Zoning Adjustments approved? Different than what we had approved?
Sure, so um, the Board is owning. And the Board of Zoning Adjustment has, um, I don't have the dates, but they have done it three previous times in the past. This, this petitioner has gone in front of the Board of Zoning Adjustment and requested relief from the paving requirement of the C eight ordinance. Um, to permit the the drive, the a dustproof surface. Um, and the Board of Zoning Adjustment has provided um, has provided that variance um, in the past. They, they currently have no variances at the site. The site is not, uh, they have no variances because variances only last for six months and they've never. Um, followed through with anything that they have um.
Could you tell me why you think they approved uh, it?
Um, you know, to be honest, I would have to go back to the minutes of those of those BZA meetings. Uh, and pull those and pull those minutes out to to see what they, what hardship. Because as the Board of Zoning Adjustment operates, there should be a demonstrable hardship for someone when they receive a variance. And it should not be based in economic use. It should be based on a, on a specific land use issue. Um, so I would need to go back to the uh, minutes to see whether there was, what their hardship um, was.
So you know that uh, they had the opportunity to use this dustproof materials. Three different times approved by the Board of Zoning, right?
Correct.
They've never used.
They have, we have the right on the site plan.
Right.
Which would supersede the BZA allowing them the dustproof material.
So the way that the Board of Zoning Adjustments would work is that after the commission approves a site development plan. Um, the Board of Zoning Adjustment is given some latitude to to grant. Um, you know, certain variances to the, to the, through the permitting process. Um, and they have provided that subsequent to the the bore or to the commission's granting the the condition, not excuse me. Granting approval of that site development plan. Um, but there, they've got a whole new one under review now and we were. Um, they were requesting this change so that they would never have to go back to the Board of Zoning Adjustment again. Um, and you know.
And I think we should resolve it so they don't have to go back to the board. I understand that. But for clarity, they've never put down even dustproof materials. They haven't done anything. An urban park and trucks there ever since two thousand fifteen, okay? And they moved some dirt around. And they drive the trucks around and they let them sit there in the middle of the field. So that, you know, just just so. The Board. Of zoning understands. That they haven't been playing very fair with 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 it. Okay? The second thing is the amending uh. The uh. What what we're asking to do, because I thought that we approved. Uh, paving on the drive lanes and parking lanes. And we did approve. I thought. Uh, dustproof material all. In in the rest of the areas. Uh, is that true or not? Am I forgetting something?
I believe that the it was that it had, it was showing paving throughout the entirety of the site of the entire, I don't, I don't believe that it.
Check on that, please.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, because I I mean, we don't need to do that now, but I I'm just saying. Uh. My, my memory serves me right, which it doesn't always. Uh, I would uh. I I think we kind of looked at that option and considered that. Uh. Because. You know. That's where we, that's where they need uh, paving. And and we don't want to move off of that target at all.
So Mel was able to actually pull up the BZA minutes from the most recent variance that was granted.
It's actually the first, Jacob.
Oh, is it the first one?
The other times they. Uh, they indicate the expiration as the.
Oh, as the as the rationale, as an ex basically as an extension.
Correct.
So their so their rationale at the time was a motion to approve the requested variance noting other alternative dust free surfaces are in the area. And that the truck, heavy trucks would be parking at this location could cause damage to to asphalt or concrete. Ms. Herman second and and Mr. Douglas concurred. Um, that was there, that are, those are from the minutes from their, why the variance was granted.
Didn't we initially turn this down?
That is correct, it was the, it was the initial, uh, it was the recommendation of the planning commission to deny this request.
And then they went around us.
The county council did approve of their, did ultimately approve a of a a uh, ordinance.
An M three.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are 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 you saying? Say say if I understand this correctly, are you saying that the? Uh, trucks would do damage on concrete?
That is the rationale that um. That was that was taken at the Barre Board of Zoning Adjustment when they granted that variance, that was their rationale at the time.
Any a- any trucking hub or any delivery dock. Uh. They all have concrete for parking of the trucks. So they must be doing it incorrectly. We all know that the concrete is the way to construct parking for trucks. Especially when they unloaded off o- o- off the tractor. So I would, I would disagree with that. It would seem to me that. Ideal situation would be that it's all paved, but if not, certainly the parking and the drive lanes should be paved.
Yeah, I see no reason to change our prior. Approval.
Then I think it is, if it that is the will of the commission, uh, the department is is, I think we're very comfortable with with um, the commission making that decision. Um, and um, we would inform the petitioner that the commission was not, did not recommend. Uh, will not be recommending this change to the ordinance. Um, and we would be comfortable, you know, letting them know know that that the commission continues to and will reiterate its expectation of of paving of the full site.
So Jacob, can they still do what they did before?
So they will have, they will have to go back to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they would have to go back in front of the Board of Zoning Adjustment again. Um, what I would say is that um, in the time period since this variance was granted, this variance was granted several years ago. Um, between then and now, this department has become uh, much more proactive in how it explains variances to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Um, and as part of our um, as part of our information, we give them an information sheet about a lot of their variances, a lot of their more controversial ones. Um, and we would, we would note that this failed at the planning commission, if that were the will of the commission, we would note that it failed at the planning commission. Um, and that the commission continues to find that uh, full paving is appropriate at the site.
Okay.
Track record with those guys, is it pretty good? When we deny and that they go around us like this guy did?
The Board of Zoning Adjustment is an independent body that makes determinations, um, you know, based on. The information that both the department and that petitioners provide to them. I can't. In this, in a similar vein that um, when when individuals ask me what will the planning commission do, I say it's an independent body that makes decisions of its own. And I think this evening's meeting is a a proof of that in many ways. Um, they are also an independent body, but we would be very, it would be very proactive to ensure that the that the Board of Zoning Adjustment did understand that the commission has heard this multiple times and continues to reiterate its expectation of pavement at the site.
Wayne, unless my memory serves me incorrectly, uh, correctly, I don't know which way, but. I don't recall hearing one like this before, how about you?
Um, no, no, this is a rare one. But I think they they thought they could go around us and uh. We have. Site review on it. So I don't think they anticipated that. But I see no reason to change it at this point.
On the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Uh. A variance is only valid for six months, so how do they? What happens at the end of six months?
It expires, so you have to have pulled your, you have to have pulled your permits within that six month period. Um, if you've not pulled your permits, then you have to come back again and get an, get another variance for the same use. Um, but once you've pulled your permits, it gives you the right to construct it as per the, you know, as per all the documents that 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 get you your building permits.
Okay, so as long as they act within the six months? Then it's a forever deal?
Well, the variance would be, it it in essence gives you the ability to to pull the permits which give you that that variance from the zoning ordinance. But because it expires after six months.
Okay.
If someone wanted to come back and, you know, establish a similar or same use at the site. Um, they would have to then re-request another variance in front of the, in front of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So um, these variances, that's that's why the Board of Zoning Adjustment typically will see. Um, you know, people want to put a deck in the exact same location, you have to come back for a variance to that every single time that you do work to your deck. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't carry on into per into perpetuity.
Okay, on the uh, uh. Board of Zoning Adjustments, what background do they have in material use? Because I can tell you, I've installed parking lots. Uh, most notably the uh, UPS facility. Up in North County, and I can tell you now that that's one foot thick concrete with reinforced. And it's it's not asphalt, it's not uh. You know, e- every place, go down to the postal service, uh, all the government facilities. I mean, it's almost like they're they're not. I don't know if you want to say professionals or engineers or whatever. To even insist that the pea gravel. Is gonna hold up better than concrete is crazy.
To the makeup of the of the Board of Zoning Adjustment in its current form, uh, the newest member, he was not a member when this board, when this variance was granted, he's an urban planner. Um, who's been on the board for um, a year, maybe a little bit longer. Uh, but the two other members um, are longtime members, uh, one of whom she is a retiree, the other one, she uh, works in the nonprofit sector. Um, so they have. You know, various experiences, but perhaps not um, related to.
Construction.
Materials.
Construction, I mean, this all relates to the construction of a parking lot.
In this variance, yes.
Yeah. I agree with Wayne, do we need to make make a motion or what do we need?
Yeah, we need to motion, Gary, you want to make one?
Um, I'll make a motion that we proceed as you describe that we uh. Tell them that we're not changing.
Okay, we have a motion to deny, we have a second?
I'll second it, Bill.
Discussion, anyone?
So this department will. Will rewrite your, will rewrite your uh, correspondence to reflect reflecting a denial. Um, and and maintaining the current uh, the existing um, the existing ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion for denial first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And we have nine B, which is uh, response to council order. Dated twelve twenty one twenty one PC twenty nine dash twenty one K two M property.
Uh, good evening, as as uh, Commissioner Hilsinger mentioned, uh, the planning commission is in receipt of a communication from County Councilman Tim Fitch. Uh, requesting conditions of development uh, for PC twenty nine twenty one and clarification as to why car sales is an inappropriate use along the north side of Manchester Road. Uh, specifically when car sales exist um, across the street. Um, as you will recall, PC twenty nine twenty one K two M Properties LLC was a request for a change in zoning from. M three and F P M three to C eight and F P C eight for a three point six three acre tract. Uh, located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Manchester Road and Consort Drive. Um, you can see from the county context map, this site is located in West County along the heavily retail oriented. Uh, commercial corridor of Manchester Road, uh, as you can see in the aerial. Uh, there's a a larger view of the aerial. Uh, that provides uh, some more of the surrounding context, you can see the site that is outlined in red, sort of triangular in shape. Uh, just north of Manchester Road. Um, and then the area that is outlined in a uh. Hash red line is Regency Park. Uh, which is an intentionally planned business and industrial park that was permitted via PC one twenty six seventy two. Uh, at the public hearing, uh, the petitioner indicated. That no improvements to the site were proposed and that their business would occupy. A single tenant space within the existing mixed tenant office building, they indicated the specific uh, space would, is the one that's encircled in in blue. Uh, they also indicated that a minimal staff presence would be onsite uh, specifically to show and test drive vehicles and that any sales of the vehicles would occur. Offsite, um, the the box um, surrounding the parking. Um, on the Manchester Road frontage is where they were propos are proposing. Um, to store vehicles um, for their their business. Um, in your recommendation of denial, the commission uh, found that the proposed use and the proposed site design were incompatible with existing uses. Um, onsite, um, as well as within the the larger overall planned industrial district. Uh, and the development pattern on, did not align with the development pattern on the north side of Manchester Road um, in this area. Um, you know, as as mentioned, the subject site is part of a long established business and industrial park that is developed with. Uh, several office and light and light industrial buildings. Uh, the site itself is developed with a mixed tenant office building, uh, which is currently occupied uh, by both general office and medical office uses. Um, concerns uh, were noted that the permitted, that permitting vehicle inventory storage at this site would. Um, present several problems, including um, the fact that vehicle inventory storage is a. Uh, land intensive use, it requires an extensive parking area. Um, permitting. Um. Vehicle inventory storage would fundamentally alter the. The visual perception of the site to be a car dealership rather than a mixed tenant office building. Um, additionally, um, any conditions of development uh, that would limit the number of inventory onsite would be, you know, extremely difficult to enforce. Um, an inspector, you know, that's responding to a complaint. Um. Would, you know, have difficulty in determining which vehicles on the site are affiliated with an off offsite car sales business. Um, meaning the vehicle inventory storage and then which vehicles belong to either employees or customers of that business or employees and customers of the other businesses onsite. Um, additionally, it would be equally difficult uh, to enforce the permitted uses at at this site. Um, as sales, rental or leasing of vehicles is not permitted um, per the the petitioner's uh. Statement of how they would be using the site as vehicle invent inventory storage. Um, in this area of unincorporated St. Louis County, um, along Manchester Road. Uh, roughly bounded to the east by Bear Station Road, uh, which is essentially the DePere city limits. Um, and State Highway one forty one to the west. Uh, all car sales and vehicle inventory storage can be found on the south side of Manchester Road. Um, all of those uses are on individual lots. Um, where the car sales and or vehicle inventory storage is the sole use on that parcel. Uh, the department uh, finds that is inappropriate to introduce a new use on the north side of Manchester Road that is incompatible with both. Um, the other uses on this specific site within the existing building and within the overall planned industrial district. Um, that this site is a part of. Uh, per the councilman's um, request, the department has prepared conditions of development for this site. Uh, changes to the site design would include landscaping along the Manchester Road frontage. Uh, additionally, around um, the existing billboard in the site on the site, which is in the southeast corner. Um, additionally, vehicle inventory storage um, would be located at the rear of the site. Uh, north of the existing building indicated by the the blue boxes. Um, so at this time, the department is recommending that the commission reiterate its recommendation of denial. And also forward on to the councilman, uh, the requested conditions of development, so it asks for a motion of denial at this time.
Do we have a motion? Anyone?
Mr. Elliott, you're muted.
I make a motion to deny.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Quick, quick question. If we would allow this kind of usage on a. Property such as this. Wouldn't we not be opening ourselves up to? Allowing this at other. Sites as well?
I think that that was one of our key arguments and one of the key arguments uh, that the commission proffered in its in its recommendation. Um, is that this is a, um, as a use, it's not typically a use that you would find in a planned uh, in a planned commerce, excuse me, in a planned um, industrial sort of um, park like this. Um, and that it it does sort of lead itself to, um, if not, if at this site, um, why not at others? And I think that was one of the key, uh, one of the, one of the important points that the commission put forward. Um, and the department um, also additionally finds um, when when wanting to expand this type of use um, to a site. We've not typically seen um, inventory, vehicle inventory storage. Um, at a, you know, at a site such as this. And additionally to to state that it's merely inventory and test drives and not sales occurring at the site. Um, would be really very difficult for the county to enforce. Um, and it would be a very quick and easy um, sort of thing to see a petitioner uh, engage in sales at the site and not because the 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 dealership is. Uh, a small drive away from this site. Um.
Right.
So it's hard to, it's hard to imagine uh, an easy enforcement of of the conditions.
Okay. Um. We have a motion to reiterate the. Previous recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I said, I. Do we have anybody opposed? Okay, eyes have it five zero. Site plans, we have any site plans?
We have no site plans tonight.
Anything good?
Just this public hearing coming up.
And that will occur in two minutes.
Correct.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
I second it, Bill.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it five zero and we are adjourned. And we'll see you back in two minutes.